And let you know how long you have to go. We will ask that you come to the speaker for the mic as you were. The name is called. Also, we have two seats reserved. And on the screen right there, they're right here, okay. Two seats reserved. That would be for the person on deck and the one following. So I will try to keep the names three ahead. One for the person who's reading and then for the person on deck and the next one. So I'll just be calling one person's name when you come up, but you'll be filling in the spot of the follow-up person on deck, okay? Hopefully that's not too confusing to you. It's a different procedure for us, so I'm trying to keep it very easily clear. So I will call the first three names. Do not forget, you have two minutes of time limit. We want to be fair to everyone who has signed up to speak. And we have to keep this time so that we keep moving. So when your time is up, the screen will flash. Please wrap within seconds and head back and I will call the next person's name that will be coming to take their seat. Okay, at this time, the person who will be speaking first will be Bon the Gardener. I will ask if you come down, come to the stage. When you come to the mic, please tell your name and your address. On deck will be Beth Jenkins. And then on follow-up with on deck is Bethany Popeless, okay? So those three people will take their positions and we'll try to keep them moving. Okay. Okay, you don't have to give your full address. Just give your voting district, your magisterial district, please. Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Gardner.
Bon the Gardner, and I'm in the city of Stanton. I have grandchildren in Augusta County schools. I would like to remind us all and the board included that when our country began, we formed the government. And since we live in a republic, our government is here to represent us and not dictate to us or control every aspect of our lives. This is especially true when it comes to our children. The parents are to make the decisions affecting their children, not the government. In saying that, I want to encourage the board to remember that you need to listen to those you represent, please. The state law that was passed does the job of making sure that transgender kids are not discriminated against or bullied and bathroom privileges are accommodated. However, the VDOE guidelines, and yes, they are just guidelines, are an overreach of a department that is not a legislated branch. It is now documented that you, the school board, can vote no to these guidelines without any concern over the loss of funding or penalty. The VDOE guidelines violate several Virginia codes by usurping authority from parents. I'm sure these violations will eventually be prosecuted. I believe that would not only put the Department of Education in a vulnerable place, but can also affect the board. Your job again is to follow the law and not a bunch of misdirected guidelines. If the threat of litigation and the loss of your positions is important to you, which I hope it is, I urge you to vote no to these guidelines, not to the law. I would also like to say that parents need to read the material in the classroom. I do appreciate the fact that you are not going to support the CRT program. Some states have already outlawed that curriculum today. So I'm glad you're following that example. Last but not least, I think it should be up to the parents to decide if their children are to wear face masks to schools, no matter what their age. This again is an overreach of a tyrannical government that should not be in the business of making health decisions for families.
Oh, no, excuse me.
Okay, oh, am I wrong? Sorry.
Ms. Jenkins, on deck will be Nick Astar. Nick Astar.
Beth Jenkins, George draft.
Thank you.
I believe parents want to have your backs if you choose to stand up and vote no to the liberal agenda. They do not trust the government. They want to send their children to public school, but they will not be told how to raise their children or that you don't have to disclose information concerning their child. They are the parents. They've paid for all the expenses incurred while training and raising their loved ones. Ultimately, the decision is yours. Will you hear the overwhelming majority of this rural community? We stand before you as constituents that represent each school district in Augusta County. We've come out twice in numbers to speak our voice. We stand strong. How will you vote? Can you show us that you value the vote that we placed in you when you were elected to your position? We are waiting on you to show us how you want us to proceed with enrollment. The purpose of public education is to provide children with a free education. We pay taxes for this opportunity. Taxes create your state and local funding. Will we be experiencing taxation without representation? While the board table voted in July, I chose to reach out and ask a friend who has chosen to become a transgender male to run high schools. I asked about his life and prepaid for graduation in Augusta County. He shared about bullying, counseling, supporting his family, attempted suicides, losing all friends, and struggles even today in an adult workplace. Bullying began this process of rejection and hurt. This young transgender male still uses his Burke gender bathrooms, which is cheap, because he feels safer in a girl's restroom. Today, this liberal policy is setting up very vulnerable rejected children for failure and more bullying. Do you think a bathroom change will solve this problem? Do you honestly believe offering co-ed status will help? You are offering a place where the best bullying occurs unchecked, the most privately unsupervised area in your entire school. Seriously, has someone lost their marbles? Will you hire monitors? Do you have a tight, waste-precious educational instruction for all uncomfortable trans-cis genders who comprise 99% of your student base to use the single bathroom? Do you want all the traffic in your offices? Employed for five years of the 14 years I was in Head Start, we went to meetings that said you could not tell these schoolers.
Next will be Jack Glover. Jack Glover, do you come down? Thank you, Ms. Supervisor.
Bethany Popeless, Stuart draft. Hi, I'm Bethany, an ACPS parent. When I spoke at the last meeting, I tried to offer an evidence-based response to the question, will these policies put our students at greater risk of harm? The answer to which is no. Policies like these have not resulted in harm where they have been implemented. And although sexual violence against children is a problem in our community, it is an issue apart from the use of respectful pronouns and providing suitable facilities to trans students. I had hoped the information I brought last time would be a relief to parents, but instead, my message was met with booing and derision.
Exactly.
Since the last meeting, I have been contacting a lot of people in communities who also support these policies.
Oh, bang on the door while you want.
I was especially encouraged to know that many educators don't need to be compelled by the laws to speak respectfully to transgender students. There are still some who would prioritize their personal beliefs over the well-being of students, but I am encouraged that we are moving in the right direction. There is still more we can do. I would like to see the legal change required dropped. A young person I related to was adopted from foster care. When she entered the foster care system, she chose a name for herself that was different from the name given to her by people who committed unspeakable harms. Her teachers lovingly used her chosen name, but when school went virtual, this child who suffers from PTS was again confronted with her former name. Another young person I related to has been deeply saddened by these meetings as this child doesn't fit into other people's definition of what their gender is supposed to be. That's the worst part of all of this. The way the humanity of transgender students has been so publicly debated. So finally, to the transgender students who may be listening, I am sorry for the cruelty you've been exposed to these past several weeks. There may always be people who think and speak the way we hear people speaking here tonight, but there will also always be people in your corner. People who are ready to support and love.
Excuse me, this is the second Mr. Astar. Ladies and gentlemen, everybody's polite when others are speaking. I think it would only be courteous. You've got to remember, you are the adults of our community and you set the example.
Let's remember, you support our children. You're supposed to have the best interest of our kids.
Mr. Harold Munson, you're next, and then Josh Latox. Okay, Mr. Astar?
Nick Astar, Ashtott district, candidate for school board. Doctor, being my compliments, sir. Do you guys like history? I love history. I had a history teacher that made a very important impact on my life. He taught American history. And we studied Pearl Harbor. And it was reported that Admiral Yamamoto, after the bombing, said, "I fear all we have done is awakened a sleeping giant and filled him with resolve." Well, here's your sleeping giant. With your handling of COVID-19, you consulted the CDC, the Health Department, the teachers' union, staff, attorneys, et cetera, but you never consulted the parents.
Yep.
Now, we're fully awake. That sleeping giant is fully awake. And we have had enough. And we, the people, and we, the parents, have had enough of nonresponsiveness. You'll hear lots of discussion tonight about transgenderism, critical race theory, and now the masks again. I hope this time the school board will listen. I listened last night to the board of supervisors meeting, and one of the board supervisors said something very profound. He said, "This board was elected to represent the people, and that is what we should be doing."
Hello.
What a novel idea. You are our school board representatives. A definition of representative is people chosen or elected to act and speak in behalf of a group.
That's right.
You don't feel it. When is this going to happen? I sure hope you do it tonight. And I'll yield my 10 seconds to the more eloquent speaker.
Okay, Ms. Sprout on deck after Mr. Latox. Ms. Munson?
Good evening. Good evening. At the last board meeting, I mentioned that I have served on local school board for several years, and I can remember the stress of dealing with my personal issues. How we see things is affected by our core values. For many years, I was an atheist. And my science and engineering background gradually led me to recognize that I have to be a creator. And I think it will help to change how we see things, including this issue we're looking at tonight. We have wider differences in this room. Fortunately, our creator provided rules for our own good. He teaches us that ignoring God is wrong, lying is wrong, harming children is wrong, and many other rules concerning our behavior. One area you want to speak clearly about is that of sexual behavior. One of the many passages about this issue is in the first chapter of the book of Romans, which discusses various perversions outside God's plan. Not only are those perverse behaviors condemned, but those who approve them are also condemned. The apostles Peter and John were told by authorities to stop preaching, and they responded, "Do you believe God or you?" You know, you do have the choice. Our country's founders rejected unjust laws and even the cubs of the Bible and their fortunes in their sacred memory. Because of that, we can speak freely to them. Whenever school board personnel suspects or becomes aware this is a poor policy, that a student is being abused, neglected, or harassed, this must be reported. Really comes down to this. Conservatives believe they know what is best for themselves and their families, and they want the freedom to pursue it. Yorcos think they know what is best for everybody and want the power to impose it. It's time to tell what you know and show what Virginia does in terms. It's time to resist and hold out for you. And it's time for this board and all fit and loving Americans.
Why do we have two times? Mr. Latox, you're standing. Ms. Sprout on deck. And Bevan Yao will be in the follow-up on deck. Bevan Yao.
Hello, my name is Joshua Cox, and I go to Riverheads High School here in Augusta County. I'm here to speak out against the transgender policy. As a student of this school district, I can tell you that by passing this, you're leaving a door wide open for sexual assault, sexual harassment, and bullying. My friends have used that word in their studies that may add to sexual harassment. What about the little girl in the bathroom being harassed? I'm not saying that transgender people are bad people. I'm saying that someone will use it as a cover. If this passed, I could go to school as a boy, and after a few days or even weeks, I could go and tell the office that I'm now a girl, and then I could secretly go into the girls' bathroom and take pictures of harassed girls. All while this is happening, my friends wouldn't even know that I'm going to the girls' bathroom. If you do not say a part of that, then you do not need to be on the school board. I'm here to stand up for the students of Augusta County. I wouldn't be able to live with myself if I didn't come down here today and try to prevent this policy. This policy is a political scam, and all of us here tonight know it. I understand that you're scared of losing funding. I truly understand that. But if you vote in favor of this policy, you'll be losing students and our support. I'm a high school student, and if y'all pass this policy, I don't know if I would even want to go back. I know that people will take advantage of it. There is no doubt in my mind. We know it's possible to vote it down. It has been voted down in Russell County, Warren County, and Pennsylvania County. Do you see how many people are here tonight that are against this? You need to make the right choice tonight. There is no price on the children. If you vote for this policy that I read, we will know that you can be bought out, and your cost will be the children. We won't forget who sold us out. I really hope that you make the right choice. I finished my time. God bless Augusta County.
Bevan Yao and Ben Yoder on deck. Ben Yoder.
Good evening, my name is Emily Sprout. Bless you, being an outsider. I am a native of Stanton and Augusta County with ancestry in this county that goes back centuries. I am privileged to serve as the executive director of Shenandoah LGBTQ Center. I am a former elementary school teacher and a preschool teacher and a parent of four children, including a transgender daughter. I want to begin my remarks this evening, as I have done in other school board meetings this summer, by addressing the dedicated members of this school board who seek to provide a safe and nurturing environment for the children under their care. The Shenandoah LGBTQ Center is here to help you serve LGBTQ students in your district in ways that will help them thrive, both personally and academically. Our experience in working with education professionals has taught us that even the most well-intentioned teachers and administrators can inadvertently create situations in which transgender students feel unsafe or unheard. Situations which impede a student's ability to focus on their academic pursuits and which put them at higher risk than other youth for self-harm. We recognize the importance of ongoing professional development to address unconscious bias and enhance understanding and empathy for transgender students, and we would be more than happy to assist in that training in Augusta County schools. But my most important message tonight is not for the adults in the room. Despite my propensity for unabashed optimism, I recognize that I likely will not change the hearts and minds of many in this room who are held captive by fear and misinformation.
Has nothing to do with that.
I would like to address the LGBTQ youth in Augusta County schools. We have been lucky enough to meet some of you through our youth group or other center events. We have met your families. We know that you are out there, but many of you are out there feeling alone, unsupported, and scared. Know that we see you, we love you, and we will do everything in our power to ensure that you survive and thrive. You are loved exactly as you are.
I'm Bevan Yao of Beverly Manor School District. And I'm here tonight to ask you to say no to accepting the new transgender model policies because it violates individual rights and freedom of speech, religious beliefs, and right to privacy. Please keep the current policy and amend it to comply with the precedent set in the Gavin Graham case. And it's important to note that the Gavin Graham had a court order legally changing his sex. This is not the case in the model policies that state. It can be emotionally harmful for a transgender student to be questioned regarding the use of restrooms and facilities. School staff should not confront students about their gender identity upon entering into the restroom. Again, this means that bad actors can manipulate this policy and can cause harm to both cis and transgender students. And yes, to those transgender students listening, we are here to protect your individual rights as well. Expressing our concerns and violations of the law is not hate on transgender students, as some would say in the media and the activist groups here tonight. This is about individual constitutional rights for the student, parent, and teacher. The Virginia Department of Education issued Navigating Ed Equity, shifting the mission of the department to advance equitable learning. And on page three acknowledged Ibram X. Kendi, who in his book on page nine on How to be Anti-Racist, Kendi writes, "The only remedy to past discrimination is present discrimination. The only remedy to present discrimination is future discrimination." And I'm here to say no. No to discrimination, past, present, and future. Civil liberties, this guarantees freedoms that liberal governments commit not to abridge either by legislation or judicial interpretation without due process, the freedoms of religion, expression, security, freedom of speech. You say this is not CRT, but you're acknowledging Ibram X. Kendi's in your curriculum. Enfringing on parental rights, you're asking teachers not to tell parents of children that their identity or what bathroom they're going to use. You're violating free speech, compelling speech. You're eliminating teachers, firing them for expressing their opinions. This is not democracy. Please do not cast the model policies and adapt the Graham case amendments. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, board members, my name is Ben. I'm white, Melanie, and I reside in Augusta County. In the last meeting, Mr. Chairman, you gave us a beautiful reminder of the freedom that we have thanks to the men and women like your son who have courageously put it all on the line because of their convictions. Something that Americans have been doing for 250 years. Well, I'd like to remind you of another guy that did this a couple thousand years ago.
Yes, sir. Amen.
And Daniel was threatened with his life if he didn't follow what directly given by his government. You know, Daniel could have found another solution. He could have gone into his room and prayed quietly. And the God that I serve is the same God that Daniel serves. He could have heard it. But Daniel didn't do that. He opened his window and he prayed out loud like he had done so many times before. Because doing the right thing is rarely doing the easy thing.
Exactly.
You know, attempting to find a patchwork solution is no solution at all. We're just kicking the can down the road. We're leaving the door open for countless other issues. What happens if a child decides they want to identify as a dog?
Right.
And they get eaten in the bushes? Or have you ever thought about litter boxes for the high school students who decide to identify as a cat?
Yep.
Of course, you say this is crazy, but a few years ago, you would have said the same thing about this very issue in front of us. And here, we're not blameless. I, like many of you, failed to immerse myself in the policy changes of the school system for so many years.
Yes, we did.
We want to be angry at the school board, but let's be honest, they've just been following the path of least resistance.
Amen.
A ship only turns one degree at a time. And you might think that there's no way we can turn this around. The only way, folks, is if we get behind the people that have the courage to continuously make the right choice. It is sickening that we cannot shout with one voice of righteous clarity on this issue. Will you have the courage to stand for the truth for what is right? Will you be a standee? Or will you find yourself stalling and stumbling, waiting the consequences for the right thing?
Amen, Ben. Dean Jones, Todd Yoder on deck, and Ashley Tan on deck.
My name is Dean Jones. I live in Augusta County. We are told in the Declaration of Independence that governments are instituted by men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. Many in the local media and social media have painted the citizens that spoke out in the July 1st school board meeting as hostile and hateful.
Twenty-nine.
I do not think that we should mistake the passion of God-fearing people and parents and citizens of the county to make these accusations. What we have seen in the last meeting was also unexpected pushback from the consent of the governed, in which many are not willing to get anyone consent that would enforce these policies. There are at least five ways in which these policies would be detrimental to our children. Number one, they encourage schools to keep secrets from an outright deceit parent. It opens doors to the state punishing parents as abusers for simply exposing genuine concerns or deeply-held religious beliefs. Requires schools to jeopardize the privacy and physical safety and rights of the students. Mandates that all school employees and students must use transgender pronouns or face punishment for discrimination without protection for deeply-held religious beliefs. Enforces school-wide protocol that crosses the line from mere harassment prevention into state-enforced promotion of politicized form of transgender advocacy. It was stated that Augusta County may lose funding if these policies are not adopted. On July 21st, a hearing was held in the Circuit Court in Lynchburg, Virginia. The Attorney General's office went on record during that hearing that boards who reject this advice as wrong for children in their communities need not be concerned about losing state funding as a result. This will not be the last fight, and it's the only current fight. So I and others do realize this involves more than just bathroom issues. A sleeping giant has been awoken. It is my prayer that we never fall asleep again. Thank you for your work.
Mr. Welcher, you'll be on deck.
Good evening, my name's Todd Yoder, and I'm from the Churchville area. And I had a speech type on up, and I'm going to scratch that. I believe that you probably received 1,000 emails and phone calls here in the last three or four weeks, and I believe your mind probably already made on up.
Exactly.
That's my personal opinion. And you know what? And I said, you know, we can get tons of people up here and talk, and I don't know if it's really going to persuade.
Nope.
So I'm going to jump on down and just share half of what I have written down here. And I just ask, that's the kind of school board. Take a stand against the unethical, radical, immoral agenda that the court system's enrichment has forced upon our children, our teachers, administrators, and you, the school board. We also know scientifically the transgender agenda is alive. Science communicates clearly. Through our DNA, we are born as a X or a Y. And also Genesis 1:27 has called us male, female. The second thing is this, the thing that bothered me the most at the last school board meeting was there's a lot of people that gave you guys a lot of static. And I've talked to some of the school board members. And I think it's time for you, the audience, to let these guys know that you stand behind them and support them. And if we support them, you know what? They're strength in numbers. And I think that they're willing to vote no if we stand. So let's take a stand and let them know that we're going back.
Kevin Harris will be on deck. This time it's Ashley Tan.
Good evening. My heart has been heavy since the last meeting. As a mom of a three and a five-year-old, I can't help but wonder what their future holds. We as a nation are at a pivotal moment in history. Can you not perceive what the radical left is trying to do? Do you really think that COVID, dehumanizing masks, vaccines, race wars, defunding civil police, statue removal, and removing our history, instituting grossly inappropriate educational policies, Marxism, masquerading as BLM, and so much more? It's all a tollway to death. And I'm here on my feet. Please vote no to mask mandates, critical race theory, or whatever lingo you choose to call it, D E N I. it, D E N I, culturally responsive learning, et cetera, and the transgender policies. The root of all of it is Marxism, divide, and conquest, oppressors versus the oppressed, is anything but inclusion and equality for all. Marxism inevitably leads to communism. And just look how well that works for Cuba, and Venezuela, and China, where right now, according to the United Nations, currently 1.5 Uyghurs are in a tournament camp. Do you really think that can't happen here? The warning signs are everywhere. The red flags are everywhere. And it disturbs me that so many in leadership positions cannot see it. It can happen here. And if we lose freedom here, where will we go? Where will our children go? They are the future. And that is why there is such a war for them, because they are our future of this nation, of this world. And I really, just keep going. Furthermore, the new policies not only advance the Marxist agenda, but erode our religious freedoms. As Christians, we believe in two genders, male and female. This brings children, makes that two genders a hate group, and some cities already prohibit folks from running for local government offices. It sounds good, isn't it? To be realizing, our base is not. And history will remember. We will remember.
That's all she's here for.
Hi, my name is Christine, and I have students in the St. Louis High School. I'm a licensed nurse and a mental health professional.
Here she is.
While there are multiple concerns with this whole conversation, I'd like to put masks real quick. Last year, I had a child who pre-kayed ten to four days a week, which was required to wear the mask at least eight hours. They only were allowed to take it off while eating. He even wore it on the playgrounds. When he got home at the end of the day, I can only imagine what you know would be on the other side of that mask. It's remnants of food, snacks, moisture, and, yes, snot. Now, my child's on return for kindergarten this year, and hopefully it won't be expected, but may have to wear that mask for five days a week, eight hours a day. I find that ridiculous. The Virginia mask mandate ended on May 28th, and except for in a few situations, masks have not been enforced. Since then, in Augusta County, there has not been enough to take a positive COVID cases. Since July 1st, the highest seven-day average for our area has been four cases.
Right.
Over the summer, our children have with masks, they have been in public places, in parks, in social gatherings. They have thrived and remain healthy. I really hope that you would vote to make masks optional. That being said, we don't hate trained students.
No, we don't.
What hits a problem with this policy is the same thing I said last time. They want parents out of it. They actually are encouraging and telling parents, or sorry, staff, how to lie to the parent.
Exactly.
It specifically states to use one name in school, one name in front of the parent. Our policy already states that there is anti-discrimination toward policies for trans students. That court case that happened already states that these children can use the bathrooms as their assigned gender. Shame on the news and the newspaper.
Call it out, twenty-nine.
That's because we opened their story with an argument over the use of bathrooms.
Exactly.
This is about parents parenting their child and not the school.
Exactly.
Mark Farmil, on deck, please. First of all, I just want to say thank you for your service. Again, I did that last time, and once again, I don't envy being you, but can we also do something real quick? Can we give it up for all the law enforcement deputies and sheriffs?
Y'all can stand up, too.
Everything I was gonna say, this is over with.
See where your hearts at?
I want to speak to everyone here. The bottom line is, it's not their fault that we're here. It's all our fault. It's from our bullpits to our dads at home not doing their job. It's all of us not being on our knees enough. It's all of us compromising the word of God for money and for working more hours than we should. If we don't like what's going on here tonight, then let's fix it.
Amen.
Let's fix it, all of us. Let's fix it. Let's stop putting blame on all the people. That's the problem with America now. We want to blame everybody else for our problems. Let's all go home, let's look in the mirror, and let's ask, oh my God, to forgive us. And we need revival in this country. We need revival in our churches. I'm asking everyone, if you don't go to church, go find a church that you can fall in love with, and you get involved, and you know what? You start winning back the hearts of your kids. The transgender community, they need our love. They don't even know anything of what we're against. They don't even know what we're for. You understand what I'm saying? There's a lot of awesome, good things about all the people that are in this room, but the enemy would love to just keep us divided. Okay? So I'm challenging all of you tonight, I don't know if my hands up or not, but I'm challenging all of us. Let's pray, let's hit our knees, let's get back to doing what we know is right all the old times in here. Let's put a prayer covering over this community. Let's take back our country. Let's take back our family.
Mr. Harris Law from the Stewart's Draft. Let me start by saying I'm fully aware that you've probably already made your decision regarding this policy.
Exactly, they have.
It was clear to me at the last meeting that you had already made your decision. I know the propaganda rag that calls itself a local newspaper likes this.
Exactly.
But anyone who's opposed to this policy is ignorant of ethics, but I can assure you that everyone in this room is fully aware and informed of what's going on here.
Yep.
Despite the fact you've already decided to cower in front of our tyrannical governor and his pathetic lapdog, I have duty bound as a parent and as a citizen to stand up here and defend what's right. To put it simply, your anti-discrimination policy is discriminatory.
Exactly.
This policy, which in reality is just one more brick in the wall of cultural Marxism, claims to be for the purpose of protecting the rights of every student. What about all the other students? What about all the students who are deeply disturbed by and uncomfortable with sharing a bathroom or a locker room while suffering the opposite sex?
Amen.
This policy also claims that it prohibits discrimination against people on the basis of religious beliefs, then it turns around and spits in the face of everyone who Judeo-Christian or Muslim believe, whose belief systems both speak out against homosexuality. This policy by its very nature violates itself. Mr. Young, during the last meeting, went to great pains to scare you by stating that there may be consequences if you fail to accept this policy.
Yep, he sure did.
Let me assure you, there will be consequences if you accept this policy. Some will be immediate, some will be eternal.
Exactly.
The way this policy causes a child to stumble and fall into a lifestyle of depravity and sexual immorality, every member of this org who refuses to oppose it will be held accountable. Not only about the citizens of Augusta County, but by God himself. And I promise you, his wrath will be far worse than anything Richmond can bring to bear. I spoke to one of you after the last meeting, and you told me that you took an oath to uphold the Constitution and the laws of Virginia. These two things are not mutually exclusive. You need to decide tonight which one you serve, and please do what's right.
Mr. Farmil, department, and Jamie Plannahan on deck. Mary C. would be on deck after Mr. Plannahan.
Thank you for your time. My name is Mark Farmil. I live in Louisville. I have a lot of words, so many good words. I will say this, thank you for addressing the CRT thing and eliminating it. Praise God for that. I'll just keep it short at this point, because everybody's had so much to say, I'm just reiterating. But remember, free men care not for what's written or written on paper. Thank you.
Terrence Williams will be on deck.
Hey, everybody. Really thankful for the opportunity to speak tonight. And I want to thank you for all that you do. There's a lot that's unseen, behind the scenes, conversation, phone calls. I appreciate even some of the late-night phone calls that have you affiliated. So thank you for your work. We appreciate that. I do want to use the time that I have to convey my reluctance to accept the model transgender policies of the VDOE. I believe them to be overreaching, imbalanced, and a poor representation of the values of most in our county. And by the way, I'm from Stewart's Draft, so I didn't say that. All right. So I want to share with you at least two reasons of why I have such caution and concern. And these are deeply personal to me, so I'll sort of start from the inside out, from primary to secondary. First, my faith in Christ and the Word of God determines my convictions on matters of sexuality. These are both central to me. They are not compartmental at all in my identity. Furthermore, my beliefs determine my approach towards those who do not share my convictions, do not hate transgender people or students, nor do I support bullying or abusing them. I believe they are people made in the image of God. Therefore, they have inherent dignity endowed to them by their maker. However, and this is the tension that I have, is that my belief as governed by the Word of God is that God made two equal but different genders, male and female. Therefore, I cannot affirm a policy that embraces what is counter to my beliefs, nor can I affirm a separation of sex and gender as two different aspects of gender identity with a multiplicity of applications. Second, as a father, I'm worried that my freedom to raise my children according to certain religious convictions will be compromised with this policy. Will the school board consider Virginia Code 1-240-1 as it relates to the rights of parents raising children with religious views which run counter to the application of the model transgender policies and those like it? The law reads, "A parent has the fundamental right to make decisions concerning upbringing, education, and care of the parent's child." Do I have more time, or is that it? That's it. Thank you for your time.
Eric Fahn doesn't care about our kids. Eric Fahn is all about Eric Fahn.
I'm Mary C. from Churchville. In 1976, I watched the Olympics, as many of us are now, and cheered on Bruce Jenner as a woman decathlon. In recent years, Bruce has changed his name, taken female hormones, wears dress, lipstick, long hair, and white heels. But every cell in his body is still male.
Exactly.
Leslie Dempsey Smith received testosterone shots and had a double mastectomy. In a little over a year, she deeply regretted her decision. She calls herself a woman because every cell in her body is female.
Yep.
Walt Hyer deeply regrets his attempted change. He had took female hormones and took, who were basically his vasculature. He asserts deeply regretted his decision. He says, "Gender is inseparable from biological sex. Though expressions may vary, gender, like sex, cannot ultimately be changed." Even the surgeon who performed my sex change admitted, "My sex did not change. Biological sex is immutable. To assert otherwise is a lie." I have been a middle school and high school teacher. These kids at this age have surgical hormones. They're very booty. They're very emotional and very impressionable. We should be encouraging our boys to enjoy and celebrate masculinity. We should encourage our brothers to enjoy and celebrate femininity and respect each other. And please let's remember that straight kids have rights.
Exactly.
Ray Efford, on deck, please.
Eric Fahn does not care about our kids.
My name is Terrence Williams, and I have kids in the Stewart's Draft. I have one kid left. I'm just gonna say something that hasn't been said yet, so I'm gonna go there. We've been made aware of allegations that Dr. Fahn has met each of you to apply pressure to accept these model transgender policies by the VDOE. We, the parents, must remind you that you represent us.
Exactly.
You do not work for Governor Northam, you do not work for the VDOE, and you do not work for Dr. Eric Fahn.
Exactly.
You work for the taxpayers of Augusta County. That being said, in the case last week in Lynchburg, Assistant Attorney General Melissa Charon stated, number one, "Any fears of retribution from the Virginia Department of Education towards any school boards is a misguided one." Then, number two, "There is no enforcement mechanism within the model policy statute," meaning there is no punishment for a school board if they fail to pass inclusive policies as the model policy guides. And number three, she answered no to Judge James Watson's question, "Would a school board lose their funding for rejecting these policies?" The answer was no. So in light of this information, my question to Dr. Fahn and every person on the school board, what is your real agenda?
Exactly.
If there's no repercussions of any money lost, then what is your real agenda?
Answer the question.
Should we make every child in Augusta County a ward of the state and make you the parents? Our children should not receive, cannot receive an aspirin or a cold medicine without our permission.
Exactly.
But you want them to choose another agenda than our model.
Exactly.
We will not sit on empty while you allow an actus to an inoculation in a K through 12 educational setting. You already have anti-bullying and nondiscrimination legislation in place. Why accept this government overreach?
Exactly.
Why open this Pandora's box? Why a few students' comfort is more important than a vast majority of students' discomfort?
Exactly.
As a Christian leader in this community, you must understand that these observations are not fueled by hatred or bigotry. This is common sense. This is ethical, and this is about safety for everyone.
Eric Fahn does not care about our kids. No, he doesn't. You want to talk about it? I've been to him. Free in the speech. Yeah, two hours I've spent with him. He doesn't care.
My name is Phil Charlie. I'm a president of Augusta County. I had the opportunity to spend 34 years in public education. A lot of you I know, that's all I got to say, is to be quick and not listen fast. The models and guidelines handed down by the Virginia Department of Education implementing the LGBT agenda are an attack on our children's purity and innocence.
Amen.
I urge you to vote against their adoption. God bless you. Thank you.
My name is Ray Efford. I live in Augusta County. A lot of what I would say and believe has already been expressed, so I'm not going to rehash things if you already heard. I know, as many of them have said, I do believe that the discrimination and bullying is already in the works, but if you do need to pass something, then pass the discrimination and bullying part. None of us here want any child discriminated against or bullied. With their positions or their parents' positions, that doesn't matter. We do not want the children abused. We don't want that to happen. So pass that part. I would encourage you to leave the rest of it alone. restrooms, locker rooms, so forth. Definitely don't exclude parents from the process. And with the rest of my time, I won't turn around, but I'll echo what Kevin Harris said. The problem here tonight isn't the school board. The problem here is that we've allowed people in statewide office and in jurisdictions, they have went to Richmond and have put this on their table. They did not initiate this. They did not initiate this. The politicians in Richmond did, told the Department of Education what they needed to do. And regardless of what happens tonight, I have how I wanted to come out, but regardless of how it happens tonight, the November election is going to be a referendum on this issue.
Amen.
And I could be better friends. If you sit home and allow someone to assume office next year that is going to push this even harder, it's not their fault. It's ours.
Rick Hamley. Rick Hamley on deck, please.
I didn't go to the school. I was born here. I didn't go to school in the United States until I think back to another third year. I grew up in Japan. And I was shocked that we were using the metric system back in 1978. What this is, is a transmorgification event. This is all a smokescreen.
Yes.
Stop. That lady spoke earlier, the scientifically based one. I'll take this step further. You take the chicken egg, the white of the chicken egg. Is everything your mother had, her mother before, inside the yellow?
Speak in the mic, please, so we can hear.
Inside the yellow. You are all Zygos. You are hermaphro- andro-hermaphrodetic. You carry both female and males. Every one of us. That is a fact. Doesn't change. It's an ugly truth. Some people don't want to go that deep. But what's coming came in 2008 with no child left behind. I read the FEMA book that they left to kindergarten teacher, my wife. My ex-wife. And step by step, that FEMA plan is being implemented. And very soon, this is gonna be a moot point. I wish I'd seen all y'all on TV and the newspaper in Richmond, beating their door down and burning their house down instead of saying, "Thank you for bringing us out of our house." Because that's your job. We don't talk about sex in school. Cops, when I grew up, didn't wear bulletproof vests. People didn't flash their P's. We had sense. It was intelligent. Use it. Most of y'all's got hijacked when your emotions kicked in when you were 13 and 14 and didn't realize it. But when you were young, you saw a man and a man together, you never thought anything of it. I'm done.
Excuse me, guys. Let me go ahead and get started here to my town's important. Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the Augusta County School Board. I want to speak basically as a parent and also as a former teacher, as well as a minister in regards to three things. Number one, I want to speak in opposition to state my unequivocal opposition, strong, has not compromised, has not changed, nor will ever change. You guys may have already made your mind up, but I want to encourage you, maybe admonish you, to let you understand that as you have made your mind up, there's a ton of people here already tonight that have made their minds up. This county right now has been stirred. If Corona did anything good for the people of this county, if anything good came about, we were able to see firsthand the foolishness and the confusion of this so-called trans policy and all the other left-wing ideas and ideology that's been pumped into our students that we have assumed before would just be alright by sending them to school and we'd work and not be involved, but now we're stirred up, now we're riled up, now we're mad, and now we're gonna be involved, and we're gonna make a difference. I want to describe this trans policy one word only, and it is called confusion. It is immoral and ungodly to support this policy. For too long, left-wing elements have infiltrated our school systems. My parents in churches have sat, packed, and not responded. This is a far-left radical policy that will wrest control and authority from the parents to godless liberal politicians. This school board does not represent the big interest groups in Richmond. You represent us, the taxpayers of Augusta County. You have the final say and authority over our children and the values they learn. Just before the inclusion, this crowd gets riled up right now, I'm gonna say one thing. We don't hate trans people. Trans people that, but my child has rights.
Exactly.
And my child has rights to go to the bathroom without being assaulted, without being potentially sexually assaulted, and it's confusion, pardon me. That's all that is now.
Where do your old grandchildren go to school? How about Ms. Wells? Where do your grandchildren go to school? Private Grace Christian?
Addressing at this time Warren Cash and Keith Jones.
Exactly. Where do your grandchildren go?
I doubt that. I did some research today. I just wanted to give you some information. My hope was to be able to reach out to all 133 districts in Virginia, but when I started contacting people last week or following the last meeting, a lot of schools had not made a decision. So I decided to wait until today and just contact as many as I could. Of the 40 districts, I started with our region, and then I expanded outside of that. So of the 40 districts that I contacted today, I asked them two questions. One was what their stance was on mask policy in the board, and the second one was if their school was going to adopt the VDOE model policy on transgender students. So I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time talking. A lot of my other points have already been gone over, but of those 40 schools, 16 voicemails were left on the mask policy. There were 11 school districts who have chosen it to be optional for their children of all ages. That's it in the school. Buses are required on buses, but inside the school, it is optional for all students. Vaccinated, non-vaccinated, and age does not matter. There were 10 who were undecided and either had meetings planned or are going to be making a decision before school starts. And there were only three who are gonna be requiring that, who are gonna require masks for their students. The districts who answered the question as far as their policy on VDOE, there were six districts that have rejected the policy as it stands and are continuing with the policy that they have in place that already covers all students. So just wanted to share that information with you, and I encourage you to make the decision that's right for children tonight.
Elizabeth White, you'll be on deck. Keith Jones, then Elizabeth White.
Okay, thank you all for allowing me to speak tonight. I didn't write up anything. There's two minutes. Not enough time to talk about all the problems going on. I just put down a few talking points or a couple things that I just came to my mind. All right, there's already a non-discrimination policy and non-bullying policy in place, all right? It involves all the kids. It involves all the kids. So if that policy's in place, there's no need for any policy pressured by rich act, okay? You're opening a door of regret, disparity, and many children, the future of our community, if you push this new policy. Masking is not necessary, and it should be optional for everyone, including our children. Many counties have already decided optional. Why can't we? And I'm gonna touch some hearts hopefully tonight, all right? This mockery of God and this creation needs to stop. This catering to pedophilia needs to stop, okay? As Keith knows, an acting pastor on the board, would you consider pushing the same teachings and ideologies, these pedophilia ideologies onto your congregation? Onto the members of your community at church? Lastly, I would like to challenge your faith in Jesus Christ as example of humanity. I encourage you to revert back to your source if you do not remember. If you don't know anything or you don't know His story, please come to me. I will share it with you. I'll be happy to sit down and share it. And I want to encourage everyone here, we gotta include the peanut gallery over here, to take a moment several times throughout the day to tell Jesus, just tell Him you love Him. Jesus, I tell you, if you tell Him you love Him, and you say it many times a day, just say, "I love you, Jesus." There will be something that will come out. You will see it, and He will say it back to you. I kid you not, I saw a bear today. I saw a bear that has Jesus telling me He loves me, that I just got done telling Him I love Him. I kid you not, and I want to encourage you all to do the same, let's keep going through the same, but each and every one of you.
My name is Keith Jones. I live in Fisherville, Virginia. In 1995, Random House published a book in the title, "The Death of Common Sense."
Yep.
The law is suffocating America. The office states law is supposed to be a framework for humans to make choices, not a replacement for choice. America is drowning in law, lawsuits and nearly endless red tape before acting on making a decision. We often abandon our best instincts. We pause, we worry, we equivocate, and then we divert our energy into trying to protect ourselves. A reviewer stated, "The message is quite clear. Our legal system is very sick, if not broken." The result is that no one wants to take responsibility or fear of being sued or inconvenienced. Plus, the definition of rights has been so badly distorted by legislation and court system that the social and actual cost to Americans is becoming intolerable. The direction we are all heading is only making conditions worse. Basic biology declares, reveals that gender is determined at conception, if not assigned by someone later on. Whatever decision you take, there will be consequences. But I would remind you, the Supreme Court of Virginia is not the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court of the United States is not the Supreme Court. There is a Supreme Court before which we all shall stand individually and give account, for not at court there is neither escape nor appeal. May you have wisdom in the decision.
You, Elizabeth. Elizabeth White, Janice White, and Sebby Volpe. Sebby Volpe.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth White. I'm from the Manor District. I appreciate that you are approaching these non-discrimination policies with thought and understanding. Thank you. I'm here to give you some information and share a bit of my experience. Schools can be either a place of safety or a place of insecurity and fear. I know and appreciate that our schools have worked with individual students to make them feel safe and accommodated, and that administration is willing and able to do this for all students, every student. Schools have tremendous potential on impacting a student's trajectory for development, mental health, and life skills outside of standard academics. Research consistently shows that the presence of one supportive adult in a young person's life can be life-changing and life-saving. The impact of every person in a school being supportive has the potential to change statistics and decrease the suicide rate of the LGBTQ+ youth from 40% to none. I am the parent of a transgender teen. One evening during his 11th grade, that is his eighth grade year, I received a call from the school counselor that no parent ever wants to receive. My child was having suicidal thoughts. My heart was broken. Sometime later, my son comes to me with fully formed and realization of his gender identity. I was so grateful that my child felt safe enough, safe enough, to share that revelation and ask for help. I'm grateful to have the opportunity to learn about who my child is instead of experiencing the loss of him. The support my child receives from his school environment has made tremendous impact on his well-being. Yes, I have questions, concerns, fears, worries for my child, but his safety and support at school should not be one of those fears. The U.S. Department of Health and Human Services reports one out of six students in grades nine through 12 have seriously considered suicide in the past year. And another study has found that the LGBTQ youth who have come from rejection families are more likely, as you make these changes within the school system to follow the model policies on non-discrimination to inclusion. I want to thank you. It is easier to change a size, a make, and a brand than to bury a child.
I'm Janice Wright. I'm an Augusta County resident. I also have a master's degree in psychology, and I'm a mother of two. I came before you last board meeting and brought up the most important guiding principle of the United States of America, the Constitution, and I brought a copy of it with me today. The school board and any elected official's duty to the public is to be a mouthpiece for we, the people. I want the board to have a better visual picture before voting on these policies just to see where everyone in this room stands, since not everybody's voice is heard. Everyone against implementing a new bathroom policy, please raise your hand.
Majority.
Everyone against mandating mandatory mask mandates, please raise your hand. Everyone against mandatory social distance protocols for our children, please raise your hand. That is the majority. Your vote tonight is about representing the majority of your constituents and more importantly, protecting and representing the children of Augusta County. The residents of Augusta County have just spoken. We are here because we are passionate in our beliefs. We have listened to our children and our kindergartners cry and say they don't want to go to school because they don't want a mask on their face and they cannot breathe.
Exactly.
This is psychological torture. Make no mistake about it. The CDC says, and I quote, "The mortality rate for a child contacting COVID is .0003."
Exactly.
The psychological impacts of what has already been done to these children haunt them for years to come. It stops now.
That percentage is definitely.
I want the children to know, we have heard your voice. You're not alone. You are not unprotected, and you are not defenseless. And I believe God has sent these people here tonight to let you know that. There are some taxpayers in this room, like myself, who are planning to homeschool their children. I will fight you every step of the way. The brave men and women of Loudoun County and Finkier County in Virginia have started a movement and made it clear, we, the people, will no longer tolerate this psychological harm being done to our children. And there are a lot of brave men and women in this room who are willing to do the same here in Augusta County. I hope it does not come to that, and I pray you make the right decision and let God feed you. ... Father George Washington. The power under the Constitution will always be in the people. It is entrusted for certain defendants and for a certain limited period to refrain of their entry toward this execution, contrary to their interests, or not agreeable to their actions, their servants, timid and undoubtedly wanting to be recalled.
Can we please have this group back here? Quit cussing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are they gonna say anything though, are they? Nope, they'll let him keep doing it.
I'm gonna cuss with Mike Donovan outside.
That's because they're gonna let him keep doing it.
Mike Donovan's out there with his crew. No, they're out there.
I don't know who these people are. Probably not from Augusta County.
Yes. I'd like to first say that my job as a pastor, I've been a pastor for 31 years. I addressed you guys in the last meeting. talked to some of you after, and thank you for just giving me the word. My job is to warn the wicked. Now, listen, we all are wicked. We all have wicked tendencies. Just like my brother Kevin said, really, the problem has started way before now, and we need to get serious about changing it on our knees. I want to say to those who are in the room that are for this, please understand, you'll stand before God just like I will. I'm not your judge, he is. So I'm not here to judge you. What I do want to say to those of you in the room that are against this, listen to me carefully. The Bible says, "If my people," listen carefully, "which are called by my name, will humble themselves and pray, and seek my face, and turn from their wicked ways, then," he said, "will I hear from heaven, forgive their sins, and heal their land." Can I get an amen? So what we need to do as Christian people in the room, we don't hate transgender people. We don't. None of us here hate homosexuals. That's not our job. That's a lifestyle they choose. What we're trying to say is our kids are in those bathrooms. Mixing both male and female into those bathrooms, making that okay, is a recipe for disaster. So I'm asking the Christian people here, to get on your knees before Almighty God and pray. And I'm asking you, as a board, to remember what I said the other day. Behind you said, "In God we trust." Don't forget that. We need to trust God. We need to trust God. I know for sure, after Judge Watson made his ruling and after what was said by the state attorney, it's clear, you're not facing any kind of flashback that you vote no on this. So vote no on this, and let's have time to fully debate and see what happens in court. Because I believe there's going to be more court cases against them from cisgender, as y'all are calling it, than there would be from the other side.
Followed by Dale Fair and Colonna Deon.
So people say that we don't hate trans. Is anyone going to say we love them? We love you guys. Okay? We may be different in some areas, but we need to show love to them. The schools are the test to be. The three R's. Reading, writing, and arithmetic. Not really radical reform. Our laws and policy are supposed to make our kids safe, all of them. Instead, we're at a point where assaults don't even have to be recorded, and resource officers are being dismissed in some of those houses. And now they wish to exploit all our kids, straight or gay or trans, when they deserve privacy and biological unity. Nobody's denying trans the right to use the bathroom. I'll give it to you straight. And I'm looking at it from a cisfemale's perspective, but I can see it from a lesbian's perspective, too. If you have male genitalia and male levels of testosterone, you do not belong in a ladies' bathroom or a locker room or a shower. It's not transphobia, it's logic. And I speak from personal experience. Consider this from the kids' point of view. Do you think females want male genitalia and masculine strength in the room with them when they have to just run? If my son walks in on my daughter using the bathroom, he hightails the female's. It's common sense. This leaves cis and lesbian females at a grave disadvantage and risk. And we should ask, why are they not requiring that all assaults be reported at the same time this policy is popping up? I'll leave that one. There are about 300 parents looking into options to pull their kids out because of this policy. So come on, school board, stand up for our kids. You've been told you're not going to lose funding. You've been told you're not going to face reprimand if you say no to this policy. And if they do come at you, trust me, the parents out here that have their kids' backs will have your backs as well.
Tiffany Alter, please. I will be on deck.
School Board, Dr. Bond, thank you for the opportunity in order to speak. My name is Dale Fair, and I have taught technology education at Beverly Manor for nearly 20 years. Regarding these directives that's been handed down to us, I have two issues that I'm most concerned about in this conversation. The matter of the use of preferred pronouns for students who wish to identify themselves as opposite sex, and the matter of equal opportunity critical race theory. But in my tech ed program, I teach STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. I incorporate laws of science and physics in my lessons. They take, for instance, the law of gravity and the law of inertia. Then I will not lie to my students about the law of gravity. But if I did lie and they stepped off a high place unsupported, that they would get hurt or they would get killed. In the same way that if I lied about the law of inertia and they entered a curve with their car going faster than the recommended speed, that they would get seriously hurt or killed as well. I cannot and I will not lie to my students about the laws of physics. In the same way that I cannot lie to my students about the science of what defines us male and female, by calling a male a female and a female a male. Not only would this law that is dictated from the state force me to lie and go against science, it would also force me to go against my Creator when He created us male and female. That being said, that I will stand up for any students regardless of what they believe, but I cannot tell them to lie. I will go ahead and tell you that all the teachers that I've talked to, that they believe basically the same way, but they're afraid of repercussions.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Karan Dingar. I actually, Augusta County, actually went to this school for about four years. I actually came to you about eight years ago. I'm getting old. Eight years ago, I came here to the school board to fight for teachers and their pay, increase their pay. That's something that I learned going to Wilson, equality. So when this argument came up about transgender bathrooms, and you know what, this speech is kind of useless to me now because everything that I've heard, there are two audiences I want to speak to. One over here, and then the sleeping giant over here. So let me focus on you. First, what is the purpose of a school? The school is supposed to be an evil space for equality, where people feel they can be heard, where people feel they can be safe. And if someone comes up as trans, and I mean this no offense to any of the families here, but if your child came out as trans, do you think that they would feel safe? Do you think they would feel safe? Do you think they would feel heard? Do you think they would feel scared to talk to you, to have that honest relationship with you? A school can do that. It's the minimum. If they come to the school, at least they can feel heard. At least the teacher is using their pronouns. At least their teacher is helping them connect, that idea. Now, oh God, 37 seconds. Let me talk to the sleeping giant. To this crowd over here, I think it's amazing that so many people came here to fight for what they believe in. Stand for something or fall for everything. And even though I do not agree, and mostly of y'all probably won't like me in this room, but even though I do not agree with some of the things you talk about, I do believe in one thing, that you all care about the children who go to Augusta County. And so I say, whatever happens today, when you hear about a boy going into the girls' locker room, if it's your boy, if it's a son who does something wrong against another gender, against a girl, please stand out. Please come to meetings like this, and please keep talking. Thank you.
Tiffany Alter. Okay. Jennifer Thompson. Mia Simmons. Mia Simmons. And on deck, we will have Andrea Kendall and Karen Oliveras.
Hi, I'm Mia Simmons. I'm from Verona, Virginia. And Augusta County has always been my home. I grew up here, and I went from Clyneburg to Stewart Middle, all the way across the road before the Florence High School. And I don't have any kids yet, but I always knew I'd want to come back here, back to my home, to raise my own children one day. And as much as I think and worry about my children, my children's future and the future in general, I want to urge the school board not to make their decisions based on fears about imaginary future threats. Change can be scary, and we're all scared of things that we don't know and things we don't understand. But I'll tell you what's scarier is what we do know, and we do know for a fact that transgender students are bullied, harassed, and discriminated against in our public schools today. The harm that transgender students actually suffer is greater than the hypothetical harm that is unlikely to result from an anti-binary law. And if anyone needs to be protected, it's our transgender children. We should be scared for their futures and the very real threats that they face every day for simply trying to be themselves. Augusta County has always been my home, a home where I've been loved and respected and cared for. But this isn't just my home or your home, but it should be a home for every person, transgender people included. So please make a decision that makes all of our children feel at home here, now and in the future to come.
Jeremy Nannix on deck next, after Karen Oliveras.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Kendall, and I'm a licensed clinical. I've had the privilege of providing therapy and clinical services to youth and families who stand in ways in Augusta County who are homeless. As a seasoned professional who has trained and read and studied and worked firsthand with trans youth, I am here to state unequivocally that being transgender is not a sign of mental or moral defect or abuse or misguided parenting. It is not because of social media influence. You cannot force someone to be trans. More importantly, you cannot force someone not to be trans. Trans youth, just like all children, know down to their core who they are from a very young age. This is how they were born. This is who they are. It is who they will always be. They are beautiful and precious and deserve to thrive and live to their full potential. And we are using them. The suicide rates for trans youth is frighteningly high. In 2020, 52% of trans and non-binary youth seriously contemplated taking their own lives. I have witnessed their pain and agony firsthand. I have sat with them while they sobbed hopelessly, trying to help them find a way forward in a world that tells them they should not exist. Many of you here say you love these children. Imagine their reaction to a crowd roaring in applause and laughter as trans children are compared to dogs peeing bushes and pedophiles. The only appropriate response is to be gender-affirmant. Using someone's preferred pronouns and allowing them to use the bathroom of their true gender is literally a life-saving measure. And yet, the myth still persists that this legislation says all boys and girls can use any bathroom they want whenever they want, and then horrible things will happen to our children. If this is really a problem, why aren't we already talking about it? If we're really worried about predatory children? It's not about that.
Done.
This is not the issue. It's being portrayed that way to mislead people and pure hatred to inferiority of our population for trans youth in any manner of life. Please stop this trend.
She's first, this is Jeremison.
Good evening. My name is Karen Oliveras. I live in Stewart Drive. It's so nice to see so many members of the school board that are longtime members and to get to meet the new ones, too. I haven't read the whole policy. I haven't. I want to now. But one of the things that struck me when I was starting to see this on social media and read the newspaper of importance is how similar this is to everything we have ever gone through when schools became more inclusive in accepting of children. Many of you, if you talk to your grandparents, they had brothers and sisters or cousins that were not allowed in public schools because they were special needs kids. You may have known folks that were blind or deaf, and they were never allowed in public school. Schools changed. They accommodated. They made sure that every one of those children knew that they were valued and allowed to be in that building. Also, until almost mid-1970s, teachers were taught to strike the hands of left-handed children. Because that wasn't the right way. They're all supposed to be right-handed. I'm asking you. I will read the policy. I hope you all look carefully at what you're looking to do and help our communities and our children. But I also want you to remember that this is a natural phenomenon of a community and a society that is embracing change and accepting everyone. Thank you.
I'm Jeremy Nash from Beverly Manor District. This time, the other thing I thought just up on the beach in Miami. And this is important that I flew home last night on a red eye to be able to speak here. Mr. Collins, I'm surprised to see you here tonight because last time you said you was looking for reasons to quit.
Exactly.
Step off and do what's right.
Exactly.
Unless somebody wants to replace you.
Amen, brother.
Represent my district. From some emails that I've seen circulate in Facebook, supposedly you do what your daughter wants, and your daughter is all up the agenda pro-LGBT.
But where does your daughter's kids go to school?
Your constituents that vote you in or want. To get back to you. I've worked in a juvenile center. And so all the kids do when they eat with the amount of supervision that we provide, they still try to stick into the bathrooms with the opposite sex with resident supervisors watching them. So if you don't think that in an unsupervised facility, stuff like that won't happen, either you're lying to yourself or you're naive. But you also claim to support mental health care. But in this example, you're enabling the mental health issues of these children instead of giving the mental health that they need. Because last time I checked, God created man and woman. And when you try to say that you are a boy today and a girl tomorrow, you're saying you're a greater creator than God himself. But the only thing that's going is pushing them further along into the mental health issue where you're having suicide rates go up. I lived in Thailand for several times. There is a whole sex industry built on this type of stuff where they take young boys and turn them into late boys and build a whole sex industry on it. That's what this is going to. So please, stop this craziness. Grow a backbone. Show your morals. Do what the majority of the population that votes you into your seat wants you to do, or be ready to be voted out for the three-year term.
Amy Hoff, she is on board right now, Amy. Following that is Jenny Ferraro and Jeff Stenrum Prosser. Will be on deck third.
Good evening. I would actually like to ask for just a little more time because the bravest person in this room would like to give his statement before I invite her to sit down.
Respected board and our fellow community members, I have been in Augusta County schools since pre-K and will be starting 9th grade this year. I have identified as male pretty much my entire life. After a few years of counseling and under the care of my pediatrician and psychiatrist, we decided that I needed to be able to live as my true self. I have been presenting as a boy since 1st grade. And just before starting 3rd grade, we met with the school to address the use of my new name and pronouns, he/him/well. UK Castle was supporting. But before my school started, they called to tell my mom that the school attorney stated I would have to use the bathroom of my sign-up or use a private bathroom. Since I was never comfortable using the girls' bathroom, this left me with only the choice. Left me only the choice. If you're not familiar with Castle, before it was tore down and rebuilt, it was a pod school. There was only one private restroom, and it was located in the main office building. This meant I had to leave the I had to leave the building I was in and go to a completely separate building just to pee. This bothered me so much that I got my body and was scheduled to go only at lunch, since the cafeteria was in that same building. the cafeteria was in that same building. During my middle school years, I used the nurse's bathroom as both a bathroom and locker room. Some days that was tough because students would be in there sick or throwing up and I would still be singled out. I have felt humiliated for simply needing to use the bathroom. Thank you.
I have been devastated by the hate being spewed at my son and our family and sadly -- excuse me -- and our family. A lot of it comes from people who call themselves Christians. Why, I'm here to tell you that God created my child and many other beautifully diverse people who you may not consider normal, but I know He loves them and has a special purpose for them. I can only imagine how sad God is to hear so many people use His name as a weapon to hurt others, especially children. Regardless of all that, the fact is, this is a public school system and we have students from many different religions and backgrounds, and therefore religion must be left out of this decision. If a parent is unhappy with the policies, they certainly have the right to choose to put their child in a Christian private school.
Yeah, but my taxpayer.
I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt you, but we give him a one-time slot.
That's fine. I just want to say that I'm really ashamed of this community.
That would be then Jeff Stenrum Prosser and then Barbara Spitz.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Raro. I talked before the last one. My husband's name is Dan Ferraro. He was fired from Henley Middle School for trying to partner with parents to help teach this indoctrination of hate. He was, we're still battling, he may be fired. He's applied for a job here, so, Dr. Bond, we are, he will not indoctrinate. But I will tell you that this is all a lie and it's all a huge smokescreen to you transgender kids too. They threw you under the bus. You're the number three targets. The number two targets are already kids that are being trafficked. And the number one targets are the dead kids. They don't have a voice. So I'd like to say, this cultural competency standard that you're going to hold all these teachers to, because it is a policy that was passed by the Virginia State School Board, so you're lying because you're going to hold the teachers to their feet to the fire to make sure they culturally indoctrinate. I asked you last time, don't do this with fidelity. And I will be running for school board when whoever's time is up, I'm in the Wayne Magisterial District, and if not me and my husband, unless he's employed by Augusta. I'd like to say this, that this is enhanced sexual abuse. This is what's coming in. Don't believe them when they tell you that it's not. It is. It's here. They're reviewed on it. The teachers are reviewed upon this. So if you do this, you're adjusting, creating more sexually trafficked opportunities for our children, and that goes for the term kids too. They may even go for a higher price.
Exactly.
So what's your legacy's gonna be? Because you're gonna be voted out. I'm from Toledo, my husband's from Brooklyn, New York, our daughter was born in the murder capital of the world. We came here for a nice place, but now we're here with Nexus. Nexus is trafficking immigrants and they're found, they're found to be liable. So you rest your finger right back down. I love my husband.
Eric, don't care about our kids.
Nicholson, you will be on deck, this is Jeff.
You don't care about our kids. Get out.
Jeff Stenrum Prosser, Wilson District. This policy is an egregious attack against the First Amendment. Forcing people to say things against their beliefs violates the First Amendment no less than suppressing speech. Public teachers and other public employees are threatened with firing if they refuse to use biologically incorrect pronouns. Even worse, parents who refuse to use biologically incorrect pronouns are threatened with having their children seized from them by government or force. This policy also menaces the First Amendment rights of those who support it. Forcing people to use biologically incorrect pronouns will only be the beginning of coerced speech. Those of you who support the policy, you will be forced to say things against your will by elites in the future. Many on the left in Virginia defend the Second Amendment in the recent past. It would be wise to do the same now for the First Amendment. The same elites who want to disarm you also want to control your speech. The Augusta County Sheriff's Office honorably safeguarded the Constitution by supporting our county becoming a Second Amendment sanctuary. I implore the sheriff and his deputies to defend the First Amendment now by helping to protect the free speech rights of parents who oppose this policy. The Board of Supervisors turned Augusta County into a Second Amendment sanctuary. I sincerely hope that the school board will show similar courage by doing the same with regard to the First Amendment. Thank you.
Barbara Spitz, then it will be Nicole Nicholson and Randall Wolf.
Hi, I'm a teacher at Wilson complex. I'm here to encourage you to adopt the current nondiscrimination policy, and I want to generate that it is your duty to implement this policy and not overreach because this is a public school and not a private one that can act unilaterally. I think we are all here because of mostly the same reason. We all have an interest for, about what is best for the children of the school district. So if we really believe in non-overreach, in liberty and freedom and individual choice, I'm having trouble seeing why that liberty and freedom and choice should not apply to all our students regardless of what is in their pants or what is on their birth certificate. And just to clear up some misinformation about what gender is and what sex is, I don't know if you've ever heard the term, hopefully you have heard terms like intersex or hermaphrodite. These are medical conditions. Not everyone is born with either one or another set of reproductive organs. I don't know if you remember when Jamie Lee Curtis came out as a hermaphrodite. She said when she was born, her parents chose a gender and assigned it to them because they had genitalia of both sexes. So the binary is not true, it's false. So if we don't want to overreach into everybody, into everybody's, you know, medical history and what's in their pants, what was on their birth certificate, what did the doctor say when you were born, then we have no choice but to take what students claim as their gender identity. And if you're upset about not being known, not being privy to what is in the gender identity of your children's gender identity, that's because you're not being supportive because you're claiming that, that you can't use the same doctor's room that are reporting to your gender. So if you're upset about your children, not complaining to you about what their gender identity is.
Time's up.
Problem. Be supportive. It's all the kids.
I don't really have an entire speech planned, but I just wanted to say that this is, I know what it feels like to be on that side of the board. Thank you all for sitting there through all of this. Thank you for creating this forum for people to speak regardless of what their thoughts and what you know what's on their mind and jobs. That's generous that you were able to do that as a girl. I would say what many people have already said tonight with, we're all here to know what, you know, for our kids and want to do what's right for our kids, and I just kind of make the observation that we're an awful lot of adults, thinking for, believing in, making choices for, worrying about, and I would probably just invite everyone to maybe take a step back and think about what would the kids actually say? What would they do? What would they feel? There's a lot of teachers in the room that are around these kids all day long and are doing this stuff all day long, and they know what these children are doing day in and day out better than most people do because they're with them most of the time. So I would say, you know, I would just hope that we can rest maybe on a lot of their thoughts and their opinions and trying to figure out what's the best thing to do. So there were some kids that talked tonight and I really appreciate and I think that's really, really brave that they would come up and voiced their opinion, whatever it was. I wish we could have more kids that were that brave to come do it, but it's hard, it's really intimidating. It's a bunch of scary adults in the back and on stage from that perspective. But again, thank you for the work, your time, thank you for doing this because I know it's not easy.
Good evening. Randall Wolf from Stewart's Draft. I'm here tonight to support transgender students and their families. I have friends and have worked with youth who are trans. I deeply admire them for recognizing who they are. They are people who may be different than myself and many in this room, but I acknowledge that I cannot really understand their feelings and emotions or their situation, but I do accept them for what they tell me. There is no doubt this is challenging for many of us to understand. It is not about understanding. We cannot, we cannot, I'm sorry, it's not about understanding, but it is about acceptance. Because I accept them, I want these guidelines to be put into place as a pathway forward for respect. Simply this respects individual rights and to me, that is rightful justice. These are guidelines that have already essentially been supported by the U.S. Supreme Court. I'd also ask that we make sure that we teach the full history of this nation to our youth. That full history is empowering the youth with factual information to help prevent repeating our mistakes. I'll end with a quote from John Adams, that the desires of the majority of the people are often unjust and inhuman against minority is demonstrated by every page of the history of the world. So you have a tough road ahead, but you need to represent the, as a representative of government, you need to put the needs of minority students who are trans.
They represent the majority.
At this time, we're moving on. We thank everyone for their comments. We appreciate you all.
So vote. How do y'all vote?
Hey, you gotta make a decision tonight.
They've already made the decision when they did the behind closed doors votes with Eric Bond.
We are moving on to our nondiscrimination policy revisions at this time.
Yeah, you did.
I'd like to make a comment and I'd like to make a motion. As a school board member, I think that Augusta County Public Schools should protect every student in our school system every day. I do not think that any child in Augusta County Public Schools should ever be bullied, harassed, or in any way they feel uncomfortable in their respective schools. I have both a broad and personal interest in the Virginia Department of Education policy and whether or not we accept it. My children graduated from Augusta County Public Schools and I currently have four grandchildren in our school system. Two of my granddaughters and a grandson are in middle school. I have a third granddaughter in high school. Two of these grandchildren are in the Pastors District that I represent. Like many parents and grandparents of Augusta County, the Virginia Department of Education policy does not sit well with me. I've read and listened to all the communications from you as parents, grandparents, and other members of the Pastors District, and I appreciate all of your concerns. Believe me, in my 12 years on the Augusta County School Board, there is no topic that has brought more attention for my fellow citizens than this matter. As the school board representative from the Pastors District, I would like to make the following motion. I move that the board not approve the proposed policy revisions presented at the July 1, 2021 board meeting because the board's existing policies are currently in compliance with Virginia Code Section 22.1-23.3 and all federal and state laws prohibiting discrimination and harassment on the basis of sex. We will continue to follow this policy as we have done in the past.
Seconded by Mr. Shipley.
We are going, we are going to, at this time, vote on that unless there's discussion, any discussion at this time? If not, we will move on then if you detect a vote. We're gonna ask that we also, we also have this as a voice vote and also as a raised hand. I'll read the, I'll read the motion again. The board will not approve the proposed policy revisions presented at the July 1st, 2021 board meeting because the board's existing policies are currently in compliance with Virginia Code Section 22.1-23.3 and all federal and state laws prohibiting discrimination and harassment on the basis of sex. We will continue to follow our policy as we have done in the past. All those in favor of this motion, raise your right hand and say aye. Aye. We have another item of business to move on to. At this point, it's a mitigation of strategies for the 21, 22 school year.
If you think this changes anything, it doesn't. They teach behind closed doors what they want to teach. They don't want to appease these people.
Can you hear me okay? Do you mind putting the slides up to the screen? As you know, the CDC made their recommendations for fall of opening schools. We've since changed that guidance. VDH last week in cooperation with the Virginia Department of Education has also presented their interim guidance for COVID-19 prevention in Virginia pre-K through 12 schools. I have just some information I want to present to you. This is the recommendations and they're only recommendations from the Virginia Department of Health and the Virginia Department of Education. I'd like to go through those briefly and then certainly at the discretion of the board, if you want to decide how you want to move forward for the opening of school in the fall, particularly in regards to masks. I'll just go through the VDH recommendations first, they're uniform, and then we'll move forward from that if that's okay. First, the Virginia Department of Health recommends that all school, school divisions work with the local public health departments to assist in determining the layer of prevention strategies needed. Selection of strategy should be informed by the levels of community transmission, local vaccine coverage, and the level of impact to school, including the potential use of screen testing data to detect cases in schools if available. Currently, the county of Augusta is in the moderate range as of today. Their nine key prevention strategies that the Virginia Department of Health and Virginia Department of Education are recommending. Virginia Department of Education are recommending, one, preventing vaccinations, consistent correct use of masks, wearing of masks, physical distancing, screening tests, ventilation, hand washing, respiratory etiquette, cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities, staying home when in sick and getting tested, and contact tracing in combination with isolation and quarantine. Regarding the consistent and correct use of masks, they're recommending at the elementary schools for all students and staff when indoors regardless of vaccination status, to wear masks until vaccination is available for children 12 years old and under. There's, there's been significant, there's been significant time for children younger than 12 to fully vaccinate. They're recommending for middle schools and high schools, that middle and high schools implement requirement of masks, that students and staff who are not fully vaccinated, please wear masks indoors. There is however, a federal mandate that is still in place regarding public transportation, public school buses and our public transportation still falls under that mandate where masks must be worn on buses. Physical distance in the classrooms, in the elementary, the language they have is it must be to the greatest extent possible, three feet, but they do not want that to be the detriment of opening our schools five days a week for all of our kids. So the goal will be to be three feet at the greatest extent possible. Same for the middle schools and high schools. Those are basically the interim guidance. We put a link on there for you if you want to go forward with that. And as I said, these are recommendations. These are not mandates, this is not an executive order from the governor's office, these are simply recommendations. I do expect some more guidance in the coming weeks now the CDC has changed, but it's a pleasure of the board if you can decide what direction you want to go with masks. We start this school year so we can start making those policies and practice in place.
I move that Augusta County Public Schools make the wearing of mask coverings optional. Teachers, staff, and visitors to start the 21-22 school year. Both of you are in accordance with the federal mandate for the public transportation face covering will be required for all individuals while using our transportation system. This motion is also made with the understanding that if conditions change in our school, community, or additional mandate from the federal government and or state government, Augusta County Public Schools will add additional mitigation strategies as necessary or required.
Having a motion on the floor that has been properly made and seconded, that we will be making the wearing of face coverings or masks, pre-k through 12th grade, including teacher, staff, and visitors begin this 21-22 school year optional. With the caveat that we understand the federal mandate is for public transportation, which is buses and school cars, face coverings have to be required for those. This motion is also made with the understanding that if conditions change, we may have to make a change. I just want you to understand that. Okay, that's been made, seconded. I will ask that we call for a hand after we vote at this time. All those in favor of accepting this motion, raise your right hand, say aye. I'm starting to get on the point of business first. Mr. Go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Everybody here? To whom it may concern, this is dated July 15th, 2021. I have spent my entire adult life working with children as a teacher and a coach and still have the ultimate privilege to get to volunteer and help coach. I've always tried to show kindness, concern, respect, and love to everyone of them. I never expected to have to deal with the issues that I've been faced with since my election to school. Serving in this capacity has been an honor, but the stress that has been constant for 16 months and I have a disease that stress is a trigger for, has started to affect my health and well-being. For this reason, I am submitting this letter of resignation as the South River District Representative to the Augusta County School Board. I will finish out the calendar year and have my resignation become effective on December 31st, 2021, which gives ample time for someone to fill this seat. It is time for someone else to try and make a positive impact on Augusta County Public Schools. And for me, to be able to concentrate on being a good husband, father, grandfather, mentor, and neighbor and not have to deal with some of the things I have dealt with the last one. Could not enjoy vacation, could not enjoy my wife's birthday, and my family has put up this stuff for 42 years.
We love you, John.
Enough is enough. I will have no further comments from anybody on this matter. Respectfully, Tom Goode. Thank you.
I would ask that we take the vote on our motion and our signature. All those in favor of the permit, raise your right hand, say aye. Thank you, Tom.